Oh, good evening. The time is seven oh one and this is a public meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. It's a meeting being conducted in workshop format and not in the format of a regular council meeting, which is to say that there will be no votes taken and no form of dispository action will be taken on any matter before us. But we're here to discuss. And if you allow me, I'll read our disclosure statement relative to COVID protocol. Pursuant to section 20 of chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. So with that said, the agenda for the meeting has been published previously. And I'm going to be turning over much of the discussion to Counselor Eric Moore, who will attend to a lot of the actual practical duties tonight. And Eric, if you're ready, you can you can take it over.
Great, thank you, Counselor Chase. I'm going to start actually by sharing a slide, a PowerPoint slide. And just maybe to kind of quickly recast the agenda. The first topic we want to talk about is just the process for charter changes. I'd like to share with the group my understanding and see if there's any feedback on that or maybe input from prior charter work. The second item then is actually talking through the changes that are ahead of us to get some feedback. And then the third item that is on the agenda tonight is the city versus discussion. So I'm going to start with the first agenda item, if that's okay. Dennis, did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I was just playing with my pen here.
Oh, great. Thanks. For some reason it popped up on my screen.
I'm sure my hand will go up eventually.
I'll start with sharing my screen. And if it looks like everyone can see that.
Can you enlarge it a little bit?
Yeah, I'm going to make it a little bit bigger here.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is just sort of a flow that shows my understanding of how we go from a recommendation from the Charter Review Committee to something that is actually part of our new charter. And this is from materials that I received from the state, but also I did get some advice from our attorney as well. But I do want to present it to the group in case there's there's something from prior history that that would help here. So my understanding is the Charter Review Committee goes off and makes their recommendation. And we did have a bunch of residents that spent a significant amount of time doing that. And then and then they presented that to us. And from there, the expectation is that a counselor, one or more counselors would would pick up those recommendations and sponsor them through the rest of the process. And by sponsor, it actually means a few things. There are a couple of things that we would typically decide at the beginning. And the first thing is, if you're sponsoring one of the changes, it includes typically a recommendation on how that change should become effective. And the options that are typically presented are, one, the change could be ratified by the voters. So essentially, at the end, the voters would make the final call. The other two I'll talk about are, you could also say, if it makes it all the way through the process, it becomes effective on a specific date. And then the last one is, it would become effective essentially immediately after it sort of makes it through this process. And and the the changes themselves are typically submitted with the actual language that is being proposed. So, you know, sort of like the cross out in the the ads there. So that's the first step, the sponsor would would sponsor it. And I'm sorry, a counselor would sponsor it and submit it. And we'd see it come up in front of the town council. From there, the rules and procedures would pick it up. It would go through that process where they might refine it, make a recommendation, and that would go back to the town council. So we're now in the third step. The town council would look at that, maybe potentially amend it, but then ultimately vote on it. So let's assume that a change has already kind of made it through those first three processes. The next thing we do is essentially petition the state to take it on. And the language, I think they use is the general court, but essentially the state legislature. So this requires us to find somebody to sponsor it. And typically, our reps would sponsor it. But what could also happen is somebody else could pick it up and sponsor it. And whoever's sponsoring it at the state level could also make changes. They could look at it and say, actually, I don't want to bring this in front of, you know, for vote. I want to make some changes. So it could be tweaked after we've sort of passed it on. The state then votes on it. And if it passes that step, it goes on to the governor. The governor ultimately signs it if the governor supports it. And then it comes back to us. Now, if you remember at the beginning, we could have, we could pick a few different ways that this could become effective. There's the vote, there's the date, and then there's like immediately. If we had picked, you know, it comes becomes effective immediately or on a specific date, it would essentially become part of our charter immediately or kind of following that choice after the governor signs it. We don't ever have to put it in front of the town for a vote. But if we stipulated, or maybe through the process, somebody else does, stipulates that the town, the residents should also vote. Then after it comes back from the governor, it ends up on our ballot. And and the residents of Bridgewater would ultimately decide whether or not it becomes part of our charter. And just kind of a few behind the scenes things that we're hearing. You know, I think one is, there's a pretty significant backlog at the state level. So we're hearing things like two years. So let's assume, you know, we get all of our charter changes ready. We kind of push them up to the state. We should expect that it could be up to maybe two years before we hear back from them. So just with everything that's going on, I think this is a pretty big window. The other thing we've heard is, you know, there's also a lot of work to get that actioned at the state level. And so if somebody sponsors us and picks it up and pushes it through, and the governor ultimately votes on it, and then it comes back to us and the town votes it down. There is, you know, this is my language, not anything formal. But, you know, that's a lot of support that we've asked for. And ultimately, you know, didn't kind of drive to a final action. So it does, you know, I think the advice there is, you know, if we're sending things to the state, we should probably have a pretty good sense of whether or not the people in town will support it if we choose to have a vote done. And so so this is the process. I just want to share two other quick examples of something before I open it up back up for discussion. The first is, I want to share an example of if it actually makes it to that vote. Recently Dover, New Hampshire went through this process with a change as big as ours. And I want to share just an example of their ballot. So they had a sizable charter change. And this is New Hampshire, so, you know, kind of keep that in mind. It's not a Massachusetts ballot, but it's similar. And they ultimately ended up with 20 different questions on their on their ballot. And the questions were essentially, you know, shall Dover approve this? So the question itself is sort of very generic, but then it actually has the change in there. You know, the cross outs in the ads. And then it has at the bottom, let's see. So this is an example. It has a description of the change. And so I'll scroll through a couple of these. You can see some are material, they're big changes, and they actually sort of change the way the government works. As we get further on, you'll see smaller changes. So this is just, you know, they changed from April to June. And there are even some at the bottom where they just list essentially a bunch of just word changes, like grammar, grammar changes. But you'll see it, it's very specific. So they list out everything. But each thing can be voted independent. And, you know, they spent some time kind of figuring out how to divide this so that if something does pass without maybe a another question passing, you know, the thing that passed could still take effect and make sense. So I share that just, you know, if we imagine what happens at the end of the process and there's a vote, you know, there's there's work to be done to to sort of think through how we package the changes so that if any individual change was made, it could ride kind of ahead on its own. So I'm going to stop the share here. And I can put the the flow chart back up if that's helpful. But I I would be curious for those who have been through a charter change before, is the way that I described it aligned with your understanding of how these sort of make it through?
Could I could, you could talk about that?
Yeah, please.
Trey, Eric, thank you and appreciate it. And I know Bill and I have been through at least two. Well, it's only been two. So I've been through both of them. I served on the first Charter Review Committee. And I made the first recommendations to the council at the time when they were actually meeting at BTV Studios. So we keep getting bounced out of where we was supposed to meet. So now, and then I, then it went to the council and it went to committee, and then I got elected councilman, and then it came back to committee. But the very first part of it, I don't believe when when we, the first council review, charter review submitted to the council, I think it just went to the charter, it went to rules and procedures. I don't think there was any. The report just went to rules and procedures. I don't, I don't know what point individual counselors started sponsoring different things. So I, and I think that needs to be clear because I think it might need sponsors. So fast forward to this current charter change, changes that came forward. As you know, the committee brought forth a bunch of changes and it was presented to the council. And then it just sat there. And then Sean and I got together and we're like, you know, we got to move this thing. So Sean and I got together and we and we made some specific recommendations and sponsored them and get it out of the council. So I think, I think we need to clear that clear that up for the next time is to, once the charter review does their work and brings it to the council, what triggers it to go to the rules and procedures? I think it's really at that point, just a simplicity, a simple formal vote from the council to refer to rules and procedures, let them do their review work, which you're doing now. And at what point do the changes actually get sponsored? I don't know, maybe Bill can, maybe Bill can clear that up a little bit more. But I really think that now that we've gone through this twice and hearing what you're hearing at the state house, that whenever it gets up there, it could take two years. That's a long, it's a long time. You know, some of the things that we're asking for, and it's really will be up to the council whether we want to bring it to the voters or make our choices, make the voters make the choices. So, but no, I do, I think for the most part, your flow chart is fine. I just think in the beginning, when it comes to the, when it comes to the charter, comes to the council from the review committee, I think it can just go to the rules and procedures and let them do their work on all the recommended changes. And then it comes back to the council to get formal sponsorship of the changes the council wants to implement, I think. So, but I don't think we want to put a ballot before the voters with 20 different questions, though. But that's up to the council when we get that. So overall, yeah, I think that's it. The process looks, looks fine, but it's a shame if it takes two years. Yeah.
So Eric, a couple of different things. So, yeah, Dennis is right. So in our first case, I don't think we had formal legislation. And I'm, I'm one of the believers that says, you know, if the council as a whole decides that they want to tackle a problem, they can assign that task to a committee without a piece of legislation. And so it becomes a task for the committee and maybe some expectations set around, you know, when to, when to bring it back, 60 days or whatever the timeframe is. So I think that's how it happened the first time. And this time we have legislation. I don't think that's really critical because in the end, you know, the committee needs to work through a couple of different pieces of of work. So the the flow chart that you described accurately portrays a special act change. And so if you look at the Constitution, section 89, I think it is. And if you look deeper into charters themselves and how they're created, how they're modified, I think, and, you know, we won't go into deeply here, but I think there's actually three different ways to change the charter. One is the special act route, and that's the one we took before, which is you try to create a a change document that exactly says what you want to have done, right? So that's, that's your, literally, if you go in and start looking at the legislation at the state level, it will say, delete these words, insert these words, strike this section, you know, add this section. It's very explicit about what's going to be changed in the law. And that, and and this is our case too. And so, you know, our document years ago was really almost a whole wholesale change because there were hundreds of edits. And so we don't need to talk about that that issue either in this case. But I do think that there's probably, you know, other recommendations, you probably end up with five hotspots, right? Compensation, you know, compensation being one, let's just use that as an example. And I like the Dover example because that's a great way of showing how to break out the different changes. You can say, do you want to have compensation or not? And keep that separate from the other topics. If you can, and maybe the last one would be, you know, if you want to change all worst to city from town or something like that. And so you do have a collection of items that the people can consider independently as opposed to, you know, one whole mess that we had before. Yeah, I don't know if that'd be more successful. So so the the process you showed is is really the the process that we went through for the charter itself and then the charter changes. And they got, and then and the sponsorship in our case was that there was a phrase in there that'll come back to the voters and the voters of the town will vote on it. I don't believe the state would take action themselves on a special act. If you left it without the voters, they're not going to take that responsibility. They'll pass it through and and they may make some changes to make it make sense in their experience. But but I don't think they would ever pass it directly and have the governor sign what's going to happen in Bridgewater directly. So the language, if you go the special act route, needs to include, you know, a vote by the voters afterwards. And you can have that, you know, as part of whole structure could be of the vote that's actually being passed through with the amendments as described, like the Dover example. But I also believe, after doing a lot of research, there's two other avenues here. As long as you don't touch the language of the of the body of the town council or the role or relationship of the town council, I think there's a path that you can go directly to the voters without needing to go to the state. As long as you're not touching the council organization itself for compensation or number or, you know, how it's structured. And there again, when you start looking at the amendment 80, 89, I think it is, and some of the other mass general law about the, you know, city form of government. I believe that's loud. And you can look at some towns like, I think it was Westwood, considering it and made a change. And they certainly did it locally. And then there's, you know, there's others, other other charter form of governments you can take a look at, see if they're making local changes. And then when it comes back to our body, we may be able to, and I'm not saying this is absolutely possible, but we may be able to actually just have it go directly to the voters without the special act. The special act, you know, was necessary for the first charge change because we were changing actually the whole, the whole thing. But it may be possible. But, you know, the backlog, we had the backlog the first time, too. It must have sat in a couple of committees for about a year, very frustrating. And there was really no way to get any, any feedback as to how soon we're going to get back or anything like that. So, and then also the first time you talked about sponsor taking, I think it was someone from Dover took over the sponsorship and made some changes to it, you know, changes that we never had a recommendation or a committee or council vote on. They made the change, then it went through and got signed by government. I don't think it was specifically, you know, you know, significant, but but it was interesting. But, you know, in terms of the backlog, it would be interesting to find out if we could do this faster with a direct line to the voters instead of going up through the state. Because it's not like the Attorney General is looking to see if it's, if it's good law or not. That that process isn't part of the flow. It's just a state legislature vote there, governor, back to the town vote.
Well, I think we can also have that discussion, continue that discussion when it comes back from rules and procedures as to what we, what we want to send to the, what we want to send to the state and what we can do internally. Like you say, there might be some things we need to go to the state and some things we can send right to the ballot. Maybe there are some things we can even do just as a council. I don't know. But, I mean, I mean, I think that and the and the rules and procedures can certainly come up with new changes. I mean, they don't, I mean, obviously, the recommendations were made by a committee. But if you see, if the rules and procedures wants to come up with a a new change, they can certainly bring that back to the council, too. And then when it comes to the council, we can add, we can do the same thing. So.
I don't, but Dennis, I don't think that was the intent of this entire process per se. But I think we're, I think we're going to have our own own, own, you know, things to change. The intent is to recommend or not support or not support things that have come to us in regards, in regards to that. So I don't envision us coming with, you know, a slate of additional recommendations that we think are good. I think we're just going to work on the ones that the Charter Review Committee put to us.
Right, but it is, it is there if you'd wanted to, a future, future changes, you know, come forward. It is, it is a tool that rules and procedures has if they want to use it.
Another thing, but my, I think that needs to direct, my understanding would be that in that particular case, Dennis, it's almost like, I'll call it a project that the town council president would give the committee. Yeah. If there isn't anything to review, we just wouldn't take it on ourselves.
Right, right.
Yeah. Eric, did you see any examples? Because this was on my mind earlier where, again, I'll pick compensation as as the topic. You know, a lot of people back when our charter first came into shape, you know, it was zero because that, you know, higher than zero was not popular. So it's left at zero to get passed. And I think the current recommendation is what, 3,000? But but let's say there was also, let's say the recommendation was 5,000. Is it possible to make almost a multiple choice out of this for the voters? Because maybe, maybe zero is unreasonable, but 5,000 isn't popular. But 3,000 would be a good average mark, you know, if you had those three. Did you see any examples of that kind of structure?
I did. I think what I saw more often, and actually maybe using that as an example, I think the state actually says the town councils should be able to set its own compensation.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. And by, but by charter, the town could decide not to do it. And so what what we've seen is maybe language in the charter that says, you know, the town council could set its own compensation, and that would be essentially voted on by the town. So we could do it all locally. And in the charter, we'd say, hey, we've decided to do it all locally. And then the actual numbers end up as a vote that we just manage ourselves and it goes into the admin code. So I think where there is, where there are specific numbers, the charter tends to say, you know, here's a process we're going to use to pick the number. And then some other place actually picks the number. But yeah, I think to your point, Bill, I did see people sort of separating those types of conversation, those types of things into like different, different questions in the, on the ballot.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you can separate the questions, but within the question, I wouldn't want to give them, you know, multiple choice, like three, five, or 7,000, that gets too.
Oh, yeah. I didn't see that.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I mean, we've had discussions, you know, Frank has come up with an idea because, you know, what we don't want to do, there's two things we don't want to do. We don't want to make it too low. And then in a year or two, have to go through the process of getting the voters to approve it. We also don't want it to be too high where the voters are just not going to vote for it initially. So, you know, Frank's got some ideas about building in kind of escalators with, Frank, I'm just oversimplifying, escalators with inflation. I was thinking about, you know, not 3,000, but maybe 5,000, that would be a good number for a few years and kind of go forward. I don't think we've necessarily landed on that yet. But that's maybe to your earlier point, that's the kind of discussions we're having. There it should be, the town should decide if we get compensation. The number itself is a little bit squishy right now.
Yeah. And that's where we see examples where the town essentially puts that decision in the charter. You know, the voters will decide the compensation. And then we sort of manage that separately in other processes. That's Braintree, I think, was the example we saw that did that.
Yeah, Braintree pays the, I mean, most counselors that get paid, pay the president more, they get like, they get an extra thousand or something, the council president does.
Yeah. So I, I think. Maybe another quick question, Bill, sort of like maybe pulling on the thread that you said of, you know, do we actually have a good understanding of all the different avenues we have ahead of us to make the changes? And sort of which types of changes might fit in different buckets? In in the previous changes, was there, I don't know, a consultant or a or a state resource that we would work with that would sort of help guide us as a town through that? Or are we up to our own sort of devices there?
No, we did it internally. We didn't hire anyone to look at it, other than the, our own attorney looked at the language. Yeah. And the state has, the state probably sends it to a lot of attorneys to look at, too, I would think.
Their internal legal department, yeah, reviews all this stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things to look. Go ahead, Bill.
No, I was just going to say the special act is the cleanest and simplest method. And they probably, as Sean said, they probably have some, some of their own representatives and and things look for troublesome language. You know, they may not change anything, you know, if we originate it. But that is the cleanest and simplest way. But no, we didn't, we didn't really have, we had our town attorney look at it at the time just to make sure it his, his knowledge of master general law and things like that.
Okay. So, so that's helpful. So I think as a takeaway from this part, I think there's probably a few things. I think we need to figure out a way to maybe get the full document into rules and procedures, I think is what I'm hearing. So that rules and procedures looks at all of the items. I think that's an option. Another option is we could say, let's stay on the path that we're on. And if there's any other sort of areas of interest, we can introduce them through legislation and that will end up in rules and procedures. And then I think the third is, Bill, to your earlier point, the Westwood process, if I call it that, you know, is there another way that we can just bring the the suggested changes directly to the voters? And that might help us guide what we sort of, what we package up for for voting.
I, I would potentially caution, and I apologize if you talked about this earlier, I came in late. Understanding getting the whole document into rules and procedures is fine. But if if anyone is entertaining trying to put every single change recommendation in front of the voters, I wouldn't recommend that because you will overwhelm them. And I think what Dennis, you and I did was try to pick out the ones that we felt were going to be the top ones that people wanted to do. But I think Ed told me, you know, this 40 or 40 plus recommendations for changes holistically, we can't do that. We, we don't have the resources to do that. And the voters, I think Bill's earlier point, the voter is going to have to go through potentially 20, 30 different light items. It won't happen. I think unfortunately, you've got to stagger these. And I think, you know, what Eric's finding out is the speed of government's terrible. But the alternative is nothing gets done. And I don't think that is an option either.
So do you think it should go on? So so do you think if we go, it should go on, the changes should go on a regular election? It looks like Westwood had it. Were voting for town officers at the same time for the changes. I mean, would that be?
I I personally, I would support having a special election. Just to focus on the changes. That would that would be my personal recommendation and not muddy the waters because. By the time we have our own election, it's gonna be new districts, new at large, a lot of changes there. I don't necessarily think, and again, I'm not trying to be. I don't know, critical, but yeah, the the attention span of people going in to vote. Is very limited. And I just, I think these, those two things between. The new council elections and the changes in the charter are too important to try to push those through once. That would be that. That's my opinion.
Yeah, it's fun. What I was saying before, you may missed it, that in in back years ago. I think we simply assigned the the task of looking at the recommendations and coming up with. A recommended document back to the council. That, you know, is attached to the rules and procedures as opposed to strictly making up legislation to send to to the committee.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was. That's the case. I think now the the scope of the recommend. Do you remember the last, and Dennis, I think you were on it, or maybe the first one? We didn't have that many recommendations from the prior rules and, I mean, from a Charter Review Committee, right?
We don't have that many. There were Scrivener's corrections like we have now, and the the biggest one was the. The town clerk.
Yeah.
I don't even think that's in the in the ballpark this year, this time. And the compensation. Term limits.
Term limits.
Yeah, and and so there, I think there were four questions on that ballot. Or four charter questions on the ballot.
I mean, I.
Everything failed.
Well, because it was one question.
But it was one question. Well, yeah, yeah.
Exactly what we're going to avoid.
Right.
By having individual questions.
Right, we ended up with almost, I think it was, you can ask Ayesha, but I think it was, um, cause she was the chair as well. So we finished up. I think it was somewhere around two hundred changes to the document itself. So we didn't even consider breaking out individual pieces at that point. But I I'm I'm of the opinion now that it's really critical to break out as individual pieces.
It needs to go back, the the the, and I remembered that this was a little controversy when it came back from the state. I think when we discussed it as a council, we sent it to the state. With the intention of it coming back with individual questions on certain things, but when it came back from the the state. They would tell us, no, it has to be one question because it wasn't, we didn't request it to be broken down. That was a little.
Yeah, if memory serves me correctly. Jason's already given us the go ahead that we can present these as individual questions.
Right, and then it came back where we couldn't, right?
No, I'm talking about now, Dennis, not last time. I think now.
Yeah.
Cause we we when we started this, we were all over it that we did not want to have the same thing happen that happened last time. Because that's not the intent of what the vote, what the Charter Review Committee wanted. And what we would want, because it it's a poison pill, right? If you don't like one out of nine, you vote no from all. Waste of time. Carlton's hands up. I don't know if he meant to put his hand up or.
I I don't think we're having a general discussion. But, um, you you know, when you're when you're dealing with a state for the special acts, you have to hand it to them in the language that you want it to be before the voters. So it needs to say straight this, amend that, insert this. In the presentation to the state. And then they go through and look at it and and then sign off on it. And the governor signs off, then we get back to voters. So it doesn't. So at that point, you know, presenting it to the state, it should have all the. All the various questions, like the Dover example. All the various questions with the options and and, you know, the the different votes that are possible overall. And then and then the the state will have an easier time with that, I think.
Right, and that's what we thought we did last time. Now this time, we're gonna make sure it happens that way.
Yeah.
Cause I don't, I don't think there's anybody that's been watching any of these discussions. Has any doubt in our minds that these have to come back as individual questions. Now, if the state comes back and says it has to be one. Then I I would. Firstly, I would get Rep. Emilia, Senator Pacheco here. Someone needs to explain, but I don't, I don't particularly think that's gonna be the case unless I'm missing something and I I'm I'm not the resident expert.
You're not. And it was it was given to the state as one big document as opposed to individual acts that that the town would vote on. So it needs to, the shell of it. Needs to be, you know, presented to the state, but inside the shell needs to be those individual. Breakdowns of what the changes are and what the questions would be. We'll be fine. And I do, I do, Eric, thank you. And I'm I'm rusty on it because I haven't looked in in a while, but I'll go back to see if I can find some of those things. I think for some of these, it might be worthwhile looking to see if we can. Go get past that two-year bottleneck, because that that process doesn't add any value. If we've gone through our recommendations. Committees, council, and now it's up to the voters. Ultimately, it's the voter's choice. Right? It doesn't matter that the governor signed it. It's the voter's choice here in Bridgewater. If we can get to there faster, then you can run it twice the speed of government.
Right. It sounds like a good speed. I like that.
All right, from slow to semi-slow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, this this is really helpful for me. I I think maybe the last thing I'm trying to figure out. You know, I'm actually just looking at like my stats here, so. There were about, by my count, maybe about ninety material changes, you know, that that's not like the really big changes, but changes that are big enough that. They change the intent of the law. You know, we we've decisioned about twelve of them, I think. You know, it's forty-eight pages. There's a whole new definition section. There's ten articles. There's, you know, anywhere from five to maybe fifteen changes per article. Um, so there there's still a sizable amount of work left. And I I'm sort of thinking through two two paths. I think one that I'm hearing is. We should probably, someone or maybe rules and procedures should look at the full document and pull out. I don't know, the the five, six, seven, twelve things. That are real material changes, the things that people probably have passion about and would have a big impact on how we work. Um, and I think I'm also hearing the rest of the stuff. Might not be worth the time right now because it would overwhelm. Maybe the voters or it's not a material change at this point. So I I want to maybe put that as like option A. Option A is we pick out the important stuff and we push that forward. Option B is we do the full document review. We look at the new definitions. We try to prepare the twenty different questions that cover. At least the changes that we think would be recommended, but it is sort of like the full cleanup exercise, if I call it that. And I I would love to just sort of hear different. Different perspectives on, should we go for the the few most important? Or should we actually try to tackle the full cleanup? The full recommendation.
So let me let me ask first before we answer that. How many of the other changes are dependent on new definitions or changes to definitions?
I'm not sure. I I think the tricky thing with the definitions, and I definitely understand the intent. I think there are a lot of changes were made to try to make the document more readable. So like the plain English sort of, you know, I think theory around these documents. The tricky thing is I I I do worry that we might have actually removed legal definitions as part of that. Um, and so there are things like at large that have a new definition. So we have to go through and make sure that new definition still works with all of the rest of the places where we use at large. I don't, I don't, I didn't do that analysis yet, Bill, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
I I'm really asking in terms of the relationship between the definition and the piece. So. If we put the definition as a question. And then later have, you know, a a something that's now dependent on that definition. And the definition fails. I don't know why it would fail, but let's say it fails. You know, and now you pass the second. Article that required that definition. Do we still have a a a good document, a legal document without that that definition being passed?
I I I don't know if every definition has to be voted on.
No, no, not every definition, but let's say you're, because I I think they moved it all to section one or did something like that. So. So let's say we say, here's our new definitions, yes or no. Right? And then as as Eric said, later on, it says, you know, at large, and now there's an at-large. Def, you know, term in that definition section that may have changed or is new. You know, if that first question fails and we're left with the old definitions, is the second section still okay?
Well, but Bill, this is, this is where we need legal expertise because. I can see the exact opposite. So we've got. Whatever you want to call it at the State House that they're going to approve. Well, we expect them to approve. When it comes back. If definitions in the charter have to change to match what has been approved by the legislature, it doesn't go in front of the voters. It needs to get done as amendments to mirror exactly what it is that we have to follow. Now, if a definition of Bridgewater or City or Town, I get that, right? That's the, that's a whole nother thing. But there are gonna be some definite, e- even if we didn't have a Charter Review. Change and we were going through this, there are gonna be some things. In the charter that are gonna have to change definition-wise because the legislature, the state's making us change it. I don't think we, we don't, we don't put it in front of the voters because there's nothing to decide. They approved it, we change it. It's if we're gonna make changes on our own. In the definitions per se, that's where it gets a little squishy in my my view, because to your point. Does the change of the definition change the intent of what originally there, or does it just firm it up? And I, I'm sorry, but I'm not. Right, I'm not expert enough to make that decision. That needs to almost be a legal opinion so that. If we go through it, it gets voted on, someone challenges it, we don't lose in court, quote unquote. Because of the way it was done. And this is where earlier on. You know, i- if we if we learn something, rule, Charter Review Committee in the future needs to have. Dedicated resources. And I just, I think this really snowballed. A lot of people put in a lot of time. They did great work. This is not a criticism. But for them to not have a dedicated, I'm not, you know, Jason helped them. But a dedicated resource that we we budget for as well as maybe, you know, some secretarial help or whatever. I'm I'm just talking in the future, but, um. You know, tha- that's where if we're discussing something, I would want someone to have a pretty clear. Legal opinion. That if we recommend that change, does it need to go in front of the voters or doesn't need to go in front of the voters? And I don't. I don't feel comfortable making that decision without someone telling me yea or nay. Cause I I mean, there there are probably some definitions there that should be cleaned up that make no material impact. To the chart.
Yeah, I was thinking specifically. If we have two questions, one is definitions and one is something else, and there is a strong relationship. Between those two things as a new document. You know, would that be, would that be an issue if the first one, if the definition section didn't pass?
Yeah. I can, I think we could look at that, Bill, and and just kind of, I guess, make sure the bundling isn't there. I I do think that at least when I look at the definitions. And then, you know, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but I've seen a lot of contracts as most of you have, right? I think. My sense is definitions have been added more for understanding than for legal purpose. Right? So like we use a term somewhere and someone who's reading that might not understand that. So it's been put in more to help the reader understand than it is like, we really need to know who does what in this means X. So I I think to Sean's point, we probably need a lawyer to kind of help us figure out which are just helpful tips. And which are actual, like real changes. But I think maybe back to to that question of, you know, do we pick the few most important? Or do we go for the the whole thing? I would be curious just to maybe just hear general perspectives on that.
I I I think, I think Eric, i- in my estimation, given the complexity and the time issues. Involved, it might make sense to go with your option A approach, which is to. Focus on the more substantial consequential changes. And and to. Not put off, but to, on a secondary basis, sort of treat the the lesser, the more ministerial and more administrative types of. Uh, issues and and changes. I ju- I just think that, you know, the overriding thing throughout this whole discussion tonight and the entire process is. One of trying to. Trying to circumvent hurdles and and manage the time flow that we know is the really critical. Issue here.
Great, thank you.
I agree with, I agree with Fred. I think I think you should go with the the first. Option that you were talking about and and maybe, you know. Get something before the council to put before the voters and then, you know, lesson learned is perhaps. The next time this has to start. Is that we ask for a, you know. Five or ten thousand dollars to begin the process with some sort of a consultant or. I love using that word consultant, don't I? Have some money aside so we can have a consultant, you know, maybe even work. With the Charter Review Committee. To start, and then when it does eventually go to rules and procedures, they have the tool to use to some. Some, you know, outside experts, so to speak, to help. Cause this, I do agree with Sean and and Fred and everybody that this. Some of the things in there are just, this is too much. This is too much for you guys to. To go through. I mean, we get paid nothing.
That's why you're right, we need twelve thousand dollars.
So we need, that's why we need fifteen thousand dollars each.
Luck with that.
Thanks, Dennis. And any anyone else have thoughts on this? So thi- this is really helpful for me. Um, I think, you know. We were, we were sort of talking this through in rules and procedures and just trying to think of a way to. To tackle the total tonnage of changes here. And I I do like the idea of focusing on those that are most impactful. And then maybe we can try to figure out a way to do a cleanup change to help with more of the. Just kind of typo comma kind of stuff. So that's, that's helpful. I I, I think I have some good feedback and good discussion to take back to rules, rules and procedures. On the larger change. Um, before I go to the next agenda item of the city versus town. Does anybody have any just kind of last comments on the process? Approach? Okay, I don't see any.
Just one, one comment, Eric, if I may, save that PowerPoint.
Oh, yes, I will. We'll use it. Actually, I will send it out as part of the notes for this. But I do like the, I certainly like the idea of when when this committee starts up next time. We do need to have a meeting to talk about just sort of how the process works. Put some boundaries and and maybe make sure we've got the right resources there so we don't get to the end and realize. You know, we 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 aren't connected. But I think that's a, that's really good advice. Okay, uh, if we could move to the next agenda item, then there's the city versus town. I think we've actually covered the first two agenda items in our discussion, so. Think we could hop to the last one. We did start this, maybe I'll share my my PowerPoint one more time. Just to kind of re-ground us on the conversation that started in council meeting. Let's see. Share this. Make this bigger. Again, just sort of grounding us on it. One of, one of the changes in there that's significant is this change. To try to align the terms we use with our form of government. And for anyone who watches this later, we have a city form of government. The state thinks of us as a city. Uh, but when we decided to have that form of government, we we intentionally decided to keep the identity of town. So we are the city. We have a city form of government, but we've checked, we opted to be known as the town of Bridgewater. And the recommendations suggested that we actually move away from town and start using city. And so the implications are, you know, we all become city counselors. And we have a city manager, there's a city clerk. You know, I guess cars and other things that say town of Bridgewater would say city of Bridgewater. And even little places like, you know, the town election. I don't know, maybe the town common, that's probably not one, but the town election would become the, you know, the city election. Um, and so this is a massive change. If we have to itemize all the places in the charter that require the change. It's over six hundred. it's over 600 individual changes. Just kind of in the wording. And just for precedent, you know, 14 other towns that have the city form of government uh, did choose to keep town. There are some, some that moved to city. Um, but a lot of the cities are also more, the more traditional, like city of Rockton, city of Boston. Um, so there are 14 other cities um, that use this. In general, when we heard opinions about this, when this came up in rules and procedures, and I received some emails too, um, the people that were in favor of city thought that it would reduce confusion. Um, so if somebody read the charter, they would clearly sort of understand who's what. Uh, they liked the idea of just sort of cleaning everything up and just going fully in with the city form of government. And then I, we did hear peripherally that it could also simplify state interactions. So somebody's talking to a, I don't know, I'm going to make this up, but it's a town clerk. Um, you know, they might think we have a different form of government than we do, and city clerk might clarify that. For the people that were in favor of keeping town, um, I think they were saying, you know, if we switch it, there might be unexpected impacts. We weren't able to actually find any. Um, but I guess there's a possibility there that, you know, there, there could be some laws or something somewhere that are unintentionally impacted by the switch. Um, more often we heard, you know, there, there really isn't a big driver for this. Like there's not an issue that we're fixing with this change from people's perspective. And then I would say the biggest, uh, most prominent kind of feedback was this, the sense that you know, town is actually part of our identity. And I think a lot of people in our town, um, just identify with the fact that we are sort of this rural um, town. And this, the city just didn't seem to match the identity. So that's all the information I have. I think we started this discussion, my sense was for, you know, people were generally supportive of staying with town. But I did want to open it back up because if we are going to pursue this in committee, um, there's a lot of work here. I just want to kind of get a sense of where people stand. So I'll pause there. Um, maybe if I could start with the question, is there anyone that feels strongly about moving to city? And thinks that we, you know, there's a, there's a big driving need to do that?
I don't. I don't.
Okay.
So we elect a mayor, we elect a mayor, we elect a mayor, then we should become a city. Other than that, we keep it the same.
So maybe I can pick up there. So if you look at, and and it's been a couple of years since I looked at it. So I think it's Master of Law 43, if I remember correctly. But it defines city forms of government. And um, the structure we have is not one of the common ones that Master of Law describes. So you can be a for me, you can be a form. You know, there's like six or seven different forms of government. And they all go describe as, as, as Dennis just said, you know, there's the mayor form, um, there, there's other pieces. Um, I, you know, I, I like what, what the original charter group did and what, you know, we've done since, which is to have the town, you know, town manager, town council form the government. I think it's, you know, has its problems, has its efficiencies, uh, you know, uh, but it, it, it's, I think much better than just having two meetings a year where, where you get to decide on legislative pieces. But the feedback I'm getting is, is exactly the same that you said, Eric. You know, our identity is a town. We don't have a city center, we have a town center, we have a common. The common in the sense of the historic, you know, bring your cows to graze common, although that'd be disastrous, but um, you know, everybody wants, you know, when we talk about downtown revitalization, they aren't looking for like downtown Brockton, they're looking for downtown Bridgewater, which is the town of Bridgewater, you know? And the old, the old town of Bridgewater, you know, the, the old shops and things like that. So I, I, you know, I understand where, and, and um, I don't know if you saw Ed's email last week, but you know, he said the same that you just said, you know, some towns elected to stay as towns in name, cities in form, um, and some others made the change. And I just don't see any, any real benefit to it. Um, you know, that our clerk's office works as a cer- city clerk, although we say town clerk. Um, we work as, you know, city counselors, although we're town counselors. And so I think functionally after 10 years or 11 years now, that we're doing okay. I, I just don't see where, you know, there's an issue.
And how many times do you get called selectman bill? They, people still call us.
Oh, all the time. When it's next town meeting.
Yeah.
So thi- this, this is one of a, of an example for me that I could see, I, I don't think, I, I don't, I haven't seen any, um, I've seen both sides of the equation, right? A- and from there, so I, I don't think there's any consensus per se, but this to me is a prime example of if this were to move forward and approved, it would impact so many different things that it actually, for the, for the clarity of the form of government may cause problems with the way that we have to do things go forward, what we have to change, things like that. So me personally, I, I'm not sitting here saying I'm for it or against it. Um, I would actually, if, if this was just, Bill, to your point, a definition and it didn't impact anything else, then yeah, put it out there. You want to be known as a city or a town. You know, at the end of the day, let, let the, the voters voice their opinion. But I think even Jason said, there are some things that we would have to basically, almost to what you were saying earlier, have ready to go, that would have to change if that definition were to be approved. And I, I don't think, and you know, the charter, the uh, Charter Review Committee was looking to make an impact like that. They were looking for clarity. So I just, I think we have to be a little bit careful at times where we don't feel it's the right thing to do, that we're making the decision for the voters, but in this particular case, I don't see it as, you know, deciding for the voters. I just think what the intent versus what the results would be if it got approved would, would actually cause a lot more problems than it solves. That, that, that's my opinion. Cause like, you know, I, I'll go back. Like for instance, I, I'm not a supporter of um, compensation for the council, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't go in front of the voters. I, I'm, you know, I'm a firm believer in that particular case that it should. Let, let the voters decide regardless of how I feel. I just don't think councils say, oh, we don't feel that city's the right look, when that technically I would put in front of the voters. But there's other things that would ca- that causes problems if it were to get approved, that probably the voters wouldn't understand and probably we wouldn't know until it actually happened. So that's, that's my opinion on this.
Uh, thank you, Sean.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm aligned with that as well. Uh, you know, I, I worry that there, there, there actually isn't a problem being solved here. And there's potentially a big problem being created, similar to what Counselor George just said. You know, I, I think about signage, I think about town seals, I think about all the different places where this word appears. Um, and I, and I feel like, you know, the, the blast radius is much bigger than we, we might expect. And I, I'm not entirely clear that there's a problem being solved with that. So I'm, I'm also in favor of, of town. And then personally, you know, I grew up here. So I identify with, you know, the kind of changes over, over time, but I do identify with town. Bridgewater, it's what I've known since I was young. So um, hearing city just sounds like a different place to me.
I think, uh, if I may, I just, uh, I've already made my position note in the past on this, and I think nothing has changed in that regard. And I, I think Bill used the word benefit. And I'd look at it from that standpoint of I don't, I don't see a substantial, you know, benefit to accrue to the town or to the citizens of the town by virtue of the proposed change. Uh, for all the reasons that a number of you have already cited and that we've talked about before, um, y- yes, it, it, to try to alleviate confusion is certainly a desirable goal, but I'm, I'm really afraid that the change would give rise potentially to greater confusion. Um, partly for the reason being that, at least according to discussions we had had from uh, uh, from the committee, um, that not every, you know, not every, the labeling of every vehicle and of every street sign and every, um, uh, you know, town station area and town seal, all those things aren't going to change. And it would just be, you know, adding additional complexity. I think it would be more confusing. And the only input that I have heard from residents of the town has been in opposition to the proposed change. And I don't know that any of us really want to be known as the counselors, you know, who, who approved the change of name from uh, town to city, um, based on what I've heard from people. I just think that, um, they're very comfortable with what we have and uh, for the time being, it, it serves us perfectly well.
But Fred, where, where I would disagree is the town council isn't approving it. The town council makes the decision to put it in front of the voters. If, if, if the voters approve it, then it, if they, they reject it, it wouldn't fall on us other than putting it in front of the voters. I, I'm saying to make the decision to even put it in front of them, we have to, we have to make sure that if we don't, which I don't think we should, this isn't about personal opinion, this is about the, the potential issues of it going forward.
A- and, and you're, and you're right, Sean. And I agree with that to this extent. I believe too that, and I've said this in the council before, uh, that in many instances, I would prefer an opportunity to put something before the voters uh, for, you know, for their decision. Uh, but in light of what we're talking about here with all of the changes that are likely to take place or beginning to take place with respect to the charter, uh, to the makeup of the council, et cetera. Uh, you know, we've been talking about just the issue of not overwhelming voters. Uh, you know, trying to simplify things, trying to, you know, not, not to, you know, pull out the important issues and, and, you know, let the more ministerial, the more administrative matters, uh, you know, be dealt with separately and, and secondarily. And, and I just don't know that, um, it's necessarily something that, you know, the town is going to be clamoring for to get on the ballot so they can make their choice be known.
And um, Eric, if I could bring one more thing up, a- as you deliberate in your committee, and eventually it comes back to the council, and it'll be something for the whole council to, to consider. Particularly when you talk about changing like city to manager and stuff like that and other things. Be, be, um, aware that in the town manager's contract, in the town manager's contract on section nine termination part two, it states in there that if the employer or the citizens act to amend any provisions of the town charter pertaining to the role, powers, duties, authorities, responsibilities of the employee's position that substantially, and substantially changes the form of government or the employee's role, that the employee shall have the right to declare that the amendment constitutes termination. So keep that in mind.
I didn't realize that, so thank you. I'll take a look at that.
A simple, a simple thing, for example, if we were to go forward with a, an appointed town solicitor or tw- appointed town attorney, that would be a significant change in the role the town manager has. Cause that authority would now be given to the council and, and fall under the council jurisdiction as far as reviews and things like that. Right now, the town manager has that. That's just a simple example. But, you know, there may be other things, whatever is brought to the council. This will be one of the first questions I asked Jason. Does this buy, do any of these changes violate the terms of the town manager's contract? And, and even if they do, he may not exercise that right. It's just something we need to be aware of.
Yeah, that's, that's great information. Okay, so I'm going to pull my screen down. Uh, I do appreciate the discussion tonight. I, I feel like I've um, got a lot of good things to, to consider and we'll bring this back to the committee to continue the discussion.
Do we have any further discussion based on the agenda? I, I know that we have, uh, we have one member of the public, uh, present and, uh, I don't know if, uh, Dr. Hunt has a particular question or a comment, but I wanted to give him an opportunity. If there's nothing else for us to contend with at the moment. Uh, Dr. Hunt, are you, uh, with us still?
Yes, I am. Um, I just think that we need to have someone that sees, leads some of these discussions. I think Eric is doing a great job, but some of the questions you're raising requires the town attorney to talk about the three pathways that you're trying to, Bill, Bill Wood suggested. And your discussion, not everything, as I understand it, not everything has to go to the town for vote. For example, the special act is before the uh, state legislature now regarding uh, the uh, makeup of the council, et cetera. That does not have to go before the citizens, I understand it. So one of the things you all need to do as you look at these issues is categorize them as what's important and urgent, urgent being the operative word. And things that are not so important and not so urgent, these would be the city discussion, unless the other types of city had, that has been referred to, but nobody's ever put those types in, type on a screen so we can understand them. Unless one of those moves that into the important category, I'm not so, maybe the urgent, but not so into the important category. I don't see a discussion taking a lot of time on that. But, but that's my thoughts. I think, uh, you need to have a little bit more support from the legal, uh, attorney in terms of the pathways. And actually, I like the diagrams. I'm a visual person. If you had a diagram that said charter change and here's pathway one, here's pathway two, and here's pathway three, then people might understand what you're talking about more. And maybe all of us would understand better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I would say to Dr. Hunt's point, the, the things that we have in committee right now, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we all classified as quote unquote, most important, the ones that we wanted to get through Dr. Hunt's point. Some we decide, you know, yea or nay to go forward and then have it packaged, presented to the legislature to go, you know, in front of the, um, in front of the voters. There were some fast followers to the, to the earlier point that we haven't touched that we should touch right now. We've got a focus, is it 10? Eric, I mean, call it a dozen.
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Call it a dozen. I mean, Colin, to your point, th- those, I think we identified the dozen that we have to get through that we want to, like I said, either get in front of the voters or wh- whatever, whatever disposition it is. Once we're done with that, uh, this is the way I envision it. Once we've submitted that to the legislature, then we start the process of figuring out what next batch do we go through? And what are the paths to those being decided, be it, is it things that we can implement? Is it things that we have to send to the legislator to have to go in front of the voters? Or is it things that we decide not to move forward on, which we have the right to do as well? That's why I'm saying that this is going to be, I'm just throwing it out there. Maybe three or four iterations of getting everything that was recommended from the Charter Review Committee dispositioned in whatever way it needs to go. I mean, if we tried to do this all, if, yeah, if we tried to do this all at once, we couldn't do it, the voters wouldn't care. It would just be a colossal waste of time.
If, if I might follow up, I, I think that's what I just said.
Yep.
But you put it in other words, that's great. I also think that there are some important and urgent things that need to be done. For example, we don't have a recall section in that charter. We depended on something that was done 20 years ago, uh, unfortunately had two people removed from the council. One, at least one. And I think that's an important and urgent need so that it's clear how you remove someone from a, a council or whatever. Uh, I think there are some important and urgent things in that. We had Dennis, I can't remember, but the report I wrote for the, uh, first Charter Review Committee uh, had something on the order of 15 major. And then we had a bunch of minor stuff that we included in it. So I think it's, I think it's critical for the public to understand that you have this list of, it's a table. You have a list of things that need to be looked at. And they're characterized as to importance, not important, urgency or not urgent. If you do that, the public can then better understand what you're doing. Yes, it's a lot of work. Uh, but being a visual person, I think that's the way you can keep the town, uh, engaged in what you're doing. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any, uh, further discussion, uh, this evening at all? No, uh, I don't believe that we've uh required the formality of a, of a vote to adjourn in any of our previous workshops, so uh. I think we can dispense with it as well. Uh, but I want to thank uh all of you and including uh Eric certainly for your advanced work and preparation for tonight. I think it was a useful discussion and uh certainly a eye-opening for those of us who haven't given a lot of close thought to. Um, the intricacies of this, uh, so I think it's beneficial for all of us. So with that, I wish everyone to have a good night.
Go Patriots, always.
Hey, hey, hey.
Right.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.